All right, I would ask, first of all, hi everybody. Um, is there any agenda additions or deletions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, approval of the minutes, um, July tenth for Tier Road Workshop.
So moved.
Yeah, is there, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, there's, uh, I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah.
But I'm sure you didn't really mean to say, um, chairman corruption.
Probably not.
Probably not.
I mean, I, you know, it's fitting, but that's probably not what you wanted to say.
Well, you'll have to appreciate my two and a half finger typing method, so.
Well, I figured it was an autocorrect thing, but.
Well, it could have been that too, I guess.
Yep.
So you do the Bible method, don't you?
You're on that.
See, can you sell wine?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, we should also mark it, uh, art was not here, so that should be reflected as an absence.
Any other corrections? All right, there was motion made and seconded. Who seconded it?
Robert.
I did, and I'm good with the corrections.
Corrections, okay. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I'd ask for a motion to accept the July tenth regular meeting.
So moved.
No seconded.
Okay, seconded by Cash. Is there any agenda addition, I mean, minute additions or corrections? Any comments? I assume everybody looked them over. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
All right, were you here for that one?
Yeah, I was here for that one.
For that part.
Yep.
Yeah, he was here.
All right, we have, um, two discussions, uh, one with Tier Road Project, and also, um, having Chris and coming over from the, uh, airport. Does anyone have any objections if we move the airport, um, discussion up so that they don't have to sit here all night?
So moved.
I'm going to let that fly.
All right, it was motion made by, uh, Rob.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then we'll do the, um, Tier Road Project under Highway. Is that okay with?
Sure.
All right, so go ahead, Chris, you wanna?
Hey, Chris Bitesel with the Rutland Southern Vermont Regional Airport. I'm here tonight with Rob Lucchini and, uh, Lukini said, and, uh, he'll be going over some of the hangar, uh, project, uh, that we have going on at the airport today. So what we have for the, it's the, uh, master hangar permitting project, which, uh, we have some handouts here. Does everyone have that handout in front of them?
Yep.
So what we're proposing is the permitting for Act two fifty partial findings on twelve new hangars at the airport. And Act two fifty partial findings is not for construction.
Thank you.
The, this is a portion of the permitting required that a developer would have to do for construction. And to explain why the state would be permitting something that is not for construction, uh, it's a little bit of a history. So Bill S. one six two, or Act seventy-eight, in two thousand nineteen, the state legislation passed this bill to promote economic development at the state-owned airports. In compliance with the legislative initiative, V-Trans began a statewide master permitting, master permitting effort for Act two fifty permits seeking partial findings for hangars at Vermont-owned airports with pavement. So they have nine different airports that they're doing this at. And the intent behind this is to assist the, the economic development at these airports. So a lot of the, in the past, a lot of, um, hangar developers were finding a great difficulty going through all the regulatory requirements to develop at the state-owned airports. And in a response to this, uh, V-Trans had set out to assist them and make some assumptions to permit some possible locations that developer might like. And in an effort that down the road, a developer could propose a project that meets all the requirements that the state had already permitted for, and it would assist them in a speedier development process. And so, uh, that started in two thousand nineteen. For this particular project at Rutland Southern Vermont Regional Airport, we, V-Trans have gotten a consultant, Clef Harbor Associates, who's in charge of this permitting effort. And if you can see the figure on the easel and on, uh, the handouts, it's showing some hangar locations at the airport. Um, the yellow hangar locations are proposed one hundred and twenty foot by one hundred and twenty foot hangars. Uh, they're the large size hangars. The pink hangars, or the magenta hangars are the medium-sized hangars that are sixty foot by eighty foot. And then the teal hangars, uh, are sixty by sixty. And the configuration shown there has some development on the east side of the airport and some development on the west side of the airport.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When you, when, any of those hangars that you build there, then you have to, um, build a tarmac? I guess that's the term?
Yeah, so.
To all of those, right?
Yeah, there'll be an apron, or a tarmac, or sort of a parking area.
Yep.
Uh, for the aircraft to, you know, exit the hangar in the sort of parking area. And there'll be an access taxi lane, or stub taxiway, to the adjacent, um, taxiways that are there. So the east side development, which you see here, have two large hangars, two medium, and two small. These hangars will be providing access from taxiway Alpha, and later on you'll see a, a plan depicting some of that work. They'll also have vehicle parking off of the Vehicle Service Road. That's, uh, to the east. These are the eastern hangars.
That used to be the old taxiway?
Used to be the old taxiway. There's also a development on the west, which has, uh, outside of taxiway Foxtrot, uh, one large, one medium, and one small-sized hangar. Uh, again, those hangars would have a sort of parking area to allow them access to taxiway Foxtrot. There are also three smaller hangars shown off of taxiway Golf. And these, some of these hangars were a part of a previously permitted hangar that are incorporated in our master hangar permitting project. Uh, two of those have been reduced in size to stay within the impervious area per the operational stormwater permit, and those are fifty by sixty. The normal-sized hangar that extends past the existing impervious area is a sixty by sixty hangar. So, in this process, there is the siting of these hangars, which has been completed. There's been some environmental impact review, which has been completed. The stormwater design and permitting is done, and the water, wastewater design and permitting is in progress. Agency of Natural Resources is reviewing the proposed water and wastewater plans, and we are beginning to compile the documents necessary for the Act two fifty application. Now, the Act two fifty application has ten criteria that must be met. Of course, there are sub-criteria, bringing that to something like thirty-two different criteria you have to meet. Uh, this effort will address as many of those as possible, leaving maybe four or five out that are specific to the development. Uh, what we are anticipating is that the large hangars will need water, domestic water, and wastewater. The medium and small-size hangars, um, do not.
What size aircraft would go in, the large ones?
With a maximum wing, wingspan of a hundred and twenty feet. So it's a, I would consider a class, you know, I'd have to look at it, there's a whole groupings of it, but it'd have to be within that, um, that wingspan. It's the same at every airport. So it's, the difficulty is for the state to try to assist a developer in the future, it's impossible to know what a developer's gonna want. So what the state has done is, is provided a few different options for a developer based on common sizes that they've seen at different airports in the state. Now, a developer could come in and propose something larger, and in that case, they would have to provide an amendment to their Act fifty application and find, get positive findings on all the criteria that exceed what we have proposed in our project. They could also propose something smaller. Um, if it's within the requirements, then their application would be easier and quicker. And so the state sort of had to make a blanket assumption to provide some sort of sizes for any possible hangar, hangar development.
On the large size that you're quoting, how many in existence now in our airports?
I don't know if I have that, actually, I thought I had.
Guess of it, I don't, you know.
There's none here, though.
None currently based here, 'cause there's no hangars to put them in.
Yep.
But they, they, they do fly into the airport, aircraft with a hundred-foot wingspan.
And then they go over to New York to park them, right?
Where they have to park out on the ramp.
Yep.
Now, uh, the hangars that you're showing, is that the maximum number for ever?
No, there's certainly options to expand.
Okay.
I mean, if developer can propose something that isn't, that isn't even in the locations that have been shown.
Yep.
Um, it's just a longer process if they were to propose something outside of that.
Yep.
This effort is just to try to get through some of the, uh, regulatory process for a developer, which has been shown as a barrier to entry for development at some of these airports. And so where we are at now is as we compile what we need for the Act two fifty application, it includes the municipality questionnaire that we have requested.
So tell me, with all the angst over two fifty permit process, is what you've been working on, or this plan, or whatever you wish to call it, is that gonna reduce the time significantly to get a permit, and if so, roughly by how much?
On the air, on the, uh, V-Trans website, we detailed the number of hours that we anticipate that would be a savings to a developer.
Okay.
It's fairly theoretical, because this process is sort of new, but, um, I mean, off the top of my head, I couldn't give you a straight number, but there are numbers provided on the website, just to give you a factor of amount. So if you go to the, the V-Trans website, and you go to the airports that.
Yep.
And the airport is listed, there's a link to a hangar development guidance document that V-Trans has a draft so far, and they're going to be constantly revising that through this process. Um, as V-Trans, uh, continues some of these permitting efforts, they will be providing some more documentation to guide developers in this, and how to efficiently go through this process and sort of where are some of the regulations in these land leases.
Now, do they, um, now, especially with the bigger hangars, bigger roof area and all this stuff, and years ago, on the east side, they had a lot of water trouble. Bob, I think you could.
Still got it to this.
Yeah. So how would, how do they figure on shedding the water? Where's that?
Yeah, so the operational stormwater permit that we have proposes, I believe, a bio-retention swale and other DMPs to address some of the water issues.
Aye.
Chris asked that for, for a drug, is it?
Yeah. So they have a seven-four bay, a bio-retention area, and an under-drain system. Here's some of the stormwater DMPs depicted for the east side. So they'll be collecting the stormwater and they.
I know that they had, they put in some retention ponds, they call them, but that, they were all, constantly were overflowing, yeah. So if you have all it, um, you know, some of the concerns are gonna be, especially with the bigger hangars, at least on that side. And then you have a blacktop, the whole place where planes have run in now. That's gonna be a lot of runoff, water runoff, so.
Yep, and so there's a bio-retention pond in that green figure depicted on the north side. And that would, uh, allow for the recharge rate of that water to be that of what was prior to the construction of the impervious area. Of course, you know, aircraft do not have a lot of operations unlike vehicle traffic during a severe rain event. Uh, but the intent here isn't to develop in an area that's gonna become a pond.
So tonight, you're looking for us to basically fill out the impact questionnaire?
That's correct.
Is the idea. I, I don't think we wanna get sidetracked with all the stuff we have on our meeting tonight, so. That's why, why I'm just drawing attention to that, so. Um, I was just looking down through, and I don't know if this is something Katie's gonna fill out as we're talking, or how we're gonna work this. Um, but looking at the services, I know they're pre-filled in, but I don't think they're filled in correctly, because the only service I think you can say that we provide would be, would be the police. Um, all of the rest of those, we do not provide, 'cause we do not have a municipal fire department. The rescue service is not municipal. Um, technically, the state takes care of all the roads over there, other than the gorge road, so there's no road provided by the municipality, and we don't do any solid waste disposal. So the only one that would be yes is police, through our sheriffs, through our sheriff.
The fire protection by a, pardon me if I wrong, but in the case of an emergency with an aircraft, or any structural fire, they would respond.
Which you guys, you guys have on-site, the, the engine on-site, that city responds, correct?
No, that's only for aircraft. So the, um, Rutland City Fire Department would respond to aircraft accidents with Clarendon, and then pretty structural fires or hazmat spills.
Yeah, that's in the past, that's how that worked.
So, but again, we, we can't check yes, because we don't have a municipal fire department. Our fire department's still a private association.
Yeah.
They're not town-affiliated.
Not our.
So, yep. So even though they would respond, it's not a town-provided service, is what I'm saying?
Wanna go down through that, check this?
Well, from there, it says if you answered no, which we didn't answer no to any of them, um, although it says it wants an explanation why the municipality doesn't.
It's not, it does not provide us.
So ba, yeah, so it's just that we don't provide it.
Yeah, so if the municipality doesn't provide it, there's a.
'Cause it's private assoc, basically, you would need to put in that box that private associations, um, provide it.
You got it? Versus the no that, yeah.
Correct.
I do right here.
What?
And then, for who provides the police, it would be our sheriff's contract.
For the police, though, you want me to check yes?
Yep, because our contract with the sheriffs is technically municipally-covered sheriff response.
Or something.
What does it, so the next question, just going down through it, is would any deficiencies occur without this project? What would they be looking for? I mean, obviously, it has deficiency economically.
What they're trying to say is, you know, and as I understand it, if you, you know, if there was a deficiency with some service as a result of this.
So, no, I mean, right, I mean, would any deficiencies occur without this project? If no, what measures can the applicant take to alleviate the deficiency? Would deficiencies occur without this project? So, I mean, I guess you just answer yes, and then the next box is irrelevant. If the deficiencies are common to many projects, does the product burden, does it, does it, and user fees to be paid to the municipality? No.
No, that'd be to the airport.
Which eliminates that box. Are you available after sufficient notice to answer questions related to those at an Act two fifty hearing? We've always said yes.
Yeah.
Somebody could go if need be. So, do you need it filled?
I don't know if I have a fill-up hole version sent to me.
Yeah, I can send you one tomorrow.
And then they can sign off on it? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, why don't you just, well, you kinda made a mess of it.
It's kind of a mess of it.
I'll be honest with you, it's not to mess this one up to me.
Okay.
Scanning my phone right now.
What impact do the results of this have on the process?
This is required for, uh, some of the criteria for the Act fifty application.
Now, do we, are there any hangars that are actually looking to go in, or is this just?
We have, um, I mean, this project specifically isn't for, uh, any particular developer, but.
So it's just a pipe dream?
And at the same time, there are developers who have interests, or have hinted at interest in generally, generally speaking, based on some of our efforts that we've been communicating with. So for me to say if there's one or the others, I can't.
You're just kinda priming the pump.
Priming the pump, baby.
Are there any, uh, people out there that are looking for places to store their planes?
Yeah.
There are.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion that we have you sign on behalf of the board the impact questionnaire, as has been filled out.
Do you second that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Are you hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 You have anything else that you're gonna present to the board or public?
I think I'm all set, unless you have any questions.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you for explaining and making it clear what was going on.
Not a problem, Robert. We appreciate your, our cooperation.
And one other thing, we haven't heard anybody talking about having meetings over there again? Was that had to come from regional planning?
Well, not necessarily, but they were the last entity that kind of were taking charge of those meetings. But we could, you know, I think there's always room for putting together a meeting that we so choose.
I think it's, it really worked well, when we were all meeting over there.
Yeah.
You know, everybody was informed of what's going on.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, do you think we oughta try and talk to people down in Rutland? I think, wasn't that the planning, regional planning commission?
Yeah, Regional Planning Commission, um, they had some, I think, grant money to kind of host, uh, those transportation committee meetings, and it was in kind of an offshoot of those. Um, their transportation advisory council, I think, was kind of a tier of that, for air, specific to airports.
Maybe we'll get in touch with who's over in charge down there now and see if there's a possibility, even if you had them once or twice a year, I mean, get that information out to the public, to the different towns around the airport, I mean.
I know, um, some airports, like, uh, the Springfield Airport, their, their airport committee is actually, um, the town, has a, has a town committee that runs it.
I wonder if we could do that? Have to talk to somebody from regional first, otherwise they'll get slapped on the wrist or something. Katie, can you make copy of this?
Oh, yeah.
And we could turn this right over? I always found it interesting.
Yeah, just having that local communication, I think.
Now, was there any further interest in the cafe over there?
Uh, no, there was, we had one, uh, there was a hangar tenant that, uh, was interested in starting up the restaurant, and he kind of pursued it a little bit, found out what the rates were, and then decided that he, he didn't wanna try to do a restaurant. But they also haven't posted or advertised it, um, but the space is still available.
Yeah, all right. Who had, who's gonna be the yes or no to that?
Um, yes or no to what? The, if, if a proposal was made?
Yeah.
Um, it would go to V-Trans, and they would review the request, I guess.
The last person was unhappy because they couldn't sell alcohol right there. I think that was not.
Maybe limited kinds of alcohol or something, yeah.
Thanks for coming, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion that we go, um, back out of order and jump to the Tier Road Project for discussion?
Is there a second for discussion?
Second, yeah.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 If I didn't hear any discussion.
Who's seconded that?
Katie.
Uh, Cassidy, yeah.
And, thanks, guys. Be safe. Cash, why don't you start the discussion about Tier Road and what we actually, uh, according to your map and stuff like this, discuss that real quick.
Okay, with, um, talking with Alan, Mayor of State.
Do they need a copy of this?
I've already seen it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we sent that, Katie sent it.
If you can figure it out. If you read the draw and figure it out, but, um, first off, start on the top by the guardrails. Um, right, just those guardrails right there, uh, set up a retention pond, um, approximately fifteen feet by eight foot wide. For that to house the water coming down from the guardrails and control it at that point, and with a retention pond, it will actually slowly leach out. Um, it won't be, you know, like we just saw this presentation before us. They have massive acreage that they're covering for a retention pond, which is gonna take a while for that project there, for that water to recede out. These ponds will be, um, receding out, depends on rainfall, depends on snow.
How deep will they be?
Approximately four feet deep, um, about eight foot wide, fifteen foot long, approximately. And what it'll do is, you'll have, when you build them, the backside of them of the length will be a little bit lower than the front side.
So they drip out?
So actually, they can almost like spill over and seep out. It's not something that's gonna be a gushing out, it's a controlled water retention.
You're saying fifteen feet wide?
Long. Approximately fifteen feet long, eight foot wide. Um, we talked, talked with the state, and that's what he recommended on doing on that. Also, the same thing at the bottom, by the.
Is there room on the bottom to take that much?
Yeah.
Really?
There's room right there. Yeah.
That's in town right away, right?
In town right away, yeah. That's why they're eight foot wide, approximately eight foot wide. And that will let it, the backside will be a little bit lower, so it shears off into that grass shear effect before it hits the brook, to keep cleaner water going into the brook, where we'll clean water act.
I understand from the state guy, 'cause I, I asked him, um, that not only does it retain the water, but it also, uh, will take any sand or gravel.
Yeah, it actually acts like a filter system, just like our ditches that we're doing.
Is that gonna be stone-lined, or?
The retention pond?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Not that big stone, though.
It'll be the three set, three to, three to five inch rock.
Okay.
Like we've been using in ditches. You know, actually, the hole will be a little bit bigger than when you, you know, say it's fifteen feet long, it's probably going about seventeen feet long, and then you pack the ends and make it approximately on top.
Is that gonna be working out that swell that was put in there? The swell that's down there right now?
That will be eliminated, that swell.
Okay, so how far over, uh, past that swell are you going?
You're talking about the, it's like two foot wide direct distraction to the brook? That'll be eliminated. The water will come down and go into that retention pond. The water will come down and go into that retention pond. So, yeah, actually fi- filtrate the, any heavy solids or anything else that's not liquid.
Right, will the pond be right there? I think that's what you want us to know, the location of your pond. Will it be roughly where that?
Yeah, yeah, that's where it is.
So it's gonna just dump into a little pond right there instead of into the brook?
Yeah.
Alright, there you go.
Yeah, I should've, I could actually, I mean, if you come back from the edge of that retention pond, probably. Without being up there looking at it right now, probably about, the pond would be like three feet past it, four feet past it, or roughly, or right in that, it's right in that.
Right there.
Yeah.
Going down towards the brook?
Yep.
Michael's well is there?
Yep, we, we saw that and it's on it.
Far away from that?
That's up, that's up on the uphill slope there, yeah.
I'm just saying now, that wall kind of banked it, so nothing goes over towards its well?
It's below the well, though, right?
It's below the well.
Below the well.
It's below the well, it's past the well.
The state, when the state drew, talked and they, they wanted it below the well so that it wouldn't, so it wouldn't affect it.
Well, it had to be to get you discharged into the river flow, for sheathing out to basically let the. Uh, sediment pond to work and go in to the pond, to the river.
Well, really, you're not gonna get that much if you pitch it my way, right? I mean, it's gonna be pretty minimal.
We're hoping.
Once you pitch it, yeah.
We pitched, see, that's what my policy did.
That's where, and, um, about a three percent pitch grade from the south to north. And then clean out the existing ditch, um, and then just below. Where, um, Ken Black's marker is.
Yep.
Just blow that, actually clean that out, redo it with some stone to that cross culvert there.
Okay, yeah, you're replacing culverts? You said good culvert? I didn't know if that would meant it was an existing good one or you're replacing them.
No, that culvert's fine.
Okay.
The only one that might need, need, need be replaced is Ken Black's.
Oh, his driveway culvert.
Driveway culvert, that's it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And, um.
Pick it up a little too.
Clean from that cross culvert by the guardrails. Clean the ditch down through, re-stone lined.
Yeah.
Not quite that tell, no, upwards from the telephone pole, just where your fence starts, just blow your fence that comes across, so your boundary line from, uh, Ken Black's.
Yeah, you guys had a rough winter. It got soft there and had to plow and, yeah, it took a hurt.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'm gonna say this much, uh, now you're gonna put that, that pond, you call it a pond?
Retention pond, they call it a retention pond.
Yeah, it's not a pond, I know.
Yeah, I don't, it does, people think about pond, they think about swimming pool.
Well, I, I don't, I don't foresee.
Will it be watering it? Yes, it will, but if it's set up right and stuff, so it flows out and migrates out.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, Cash, for the fifty-eight years I've lived on that road, and seventy-nine years my husband's been on that road. There's never been a problem with water coming down on that side of the road. It had, the washout was caused by the corner, a lot of fill was putting up there, and you know it as well as I do. And the, um.
Seeing a lot of problems with that road, it don't have a good enough base in it. Theoretically, that road oughta be tore it up like three feet deep and put the bone right to it to get a base, and then you could keep your top.
Well, every time they graded, they didn't grade, they leveled dirt. There's a difference of grading. And let, let, you know, and I'm not trying to be smart, Cash, please don't take me that way, but it's, it's, you know, you can't bring up dirt and just level it. It doesn't work that way. And all that dirt they brought up just kept washing down, washing down. And then, of course, the boards, we took them out, and I think I've talked to Mike and told him, we have had no washout. No problem since those boards have been taken out. So as far as water running down on that side of the road. We've never had it except that one time we had the flood.
Mm-hmm.
When, uh, the neighbor up above broke that culvert through and everything like this, they won't stop anything, nothing.
Right.
A mess. But, so that's what I'm saying is that.
That's where.
The cold complaint of this road.
Where the material and stuff, and actually what happened was too, is we learned about material, and now we're. The, the top of the material for your top. And in years past, it hasn't been enough vines in it to keep it compact yet. If you look at a lot of our roads now. They're almost like blocked off. Some of them are smoother than, uh, some of them are blocked up roads.
And I'm just saying, they just kept raising the road. Even Joanne said at the last meeting, that their driveway now goes into a ditch. So to get their camper out, it hits, you know, because they had, well, they had their driveway all fixed to the road. And they didn't have had a problem.
Actually put some.
They're raising the road so high.
I actually put some fill in there, like I asked you a year before.
New driveway?
Ken Black's driveway.
Uh, Joanne said down here at the meeting, they've got a dip and she goes into their car, you know, uh, that is. Maybe when you put a new culvert in or something, maybe that'll change, I don't know, but, um.
Well, that and set the culvert back a little bit, get it away from the shoulder of the road, it'll help a lot too.
One thing, now you're gonna put these ponds in, and I know they're not ponds of water.
Right.
Uh, I've been informed that seeing that you're taking your right of way that you have. We will not be responsible with them. We have kids coming down off the top of the hill, they look for dogs and everything else, and they go over that bank. Any kid gets hurt, we're not liable.
For this, if you actually, on Aaron's side, that's all.
Aaron's side.
I know.
Oh.
If you look on the Aaron's side, that whole ditch line down through there is just riprap, same rock.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, if anybody gets hurt, the town has taken the right of way. That's on the town now. We're not gonna be liable if anybody gets hurt there.
They shouldn't be in the pond.
I'm just saying, but, you know, we can't watch everybody that goes on, you know, walks down the road and goes over that bank. We can't watch everybody.
This, this pond is not gonna be down over the bank. It's gonna be, top of it's gonna be level the road.
But it's on our side of the property, Cash, is what I'm saying.
And like I said, it's no different than Aaron's side with the, the riprap down the whole ditch line.
I understand that, but I'm talking about our property goes on that. Yeah, that's Aaron's property too, but that's the road. The ditch for the road. These ditches you're, you're putting off the road. On to your right of way, okay, I'm right there, but if you're gonna take the right of way, who's gonna be responsible if anybody gets hurt? Not me.
Did you research?
Somebody gets hurt in our right of way, we're, we're, we're covered with that.
Yeah.
Did you research that, Katie?
I did.
Good.
Okay, so.
What'd they come up with?
Um, so I did give her the example of the, um, retention pond. But I also asked example of someone like slipped in one of our ditches, and she said passive, passive coverage would apply in each of these scenarios. Subject to the agreements, limitations, exclusions, and conditions of the coverage document. Of course, it's impossible to predict all claim situations and what other entities might be liable for a claim of that nature, so there could be other parties involved. Um, she also suggested having a, uh, written agreement for the right of way. That would be benefit as it would establish who's responsible for maintenance and liability of the right of way and would help expedite a claim if one were, were to occur. We have seen instances where nothing was in writing and the process was delayed in determining who is responsible for what. For any pool or pond signage is also recommended for areas that cannot be controlled via fencing or other containment.
So ba- basically, it sounds to me like they're just, you know, you, you had to get a lawyer first to?
No, they're saying it's us. It's, that's, it's a lot of legalese, but they're saying it's us.
It's us, but if there, if somebody's coming around that corner and doing seventy-five miles an hour, it's them.
Correct.
That's what they're saying.
Yeah, they're saying that if there's like gross negligence.
Right, if it's somebody else's fault.
Yeah, in other words, like, if I'm coming, again, like you say, if I'm coming around Walker Mountain Dead Man's Curve at eighty miles an hour. I'm grossly negligent and they're gonna say that I was at fault, but if I'm driving according to the parameters or that they deem appropriate for the road. Then it's the town's issue. That's what they're saying.
Alright, use.
Okay, so.
Pardon?
You're not responsible.
Okay, can I have that in writing?
Those on film?
Through V L C.
What's that?
You can get a, I mean.
A copy of the minutes.
Our, but our cop, I mean, our V, V L C T coverage in that email's public record, so we can certainly provide that.
Okay, okay. I'm just trying to protect us because that is our land. You know, and people, like I said, you see kids walking down the road, they go over that guardrail, you know, and they, uh, larcen up there.
Yeah.
For their animals all the time, all the time.
We can't keep people from going on your property.
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm talking if they get hurt.
If they get hurt in our right of way, then, then it's not your problem, it's our, it's our problem. If they're hurt in our right of way.
I prefer to have it in writing because I don't wanna be liable for something that the town put in. And, and if anybody got hurt in that area, that's what I'm talking about, in that area.
At V L C through insurance spells it out.
Yeah, that email spells it out. We could provide a copy.
I'll print it out.
And when you print that out, you're gonna, that'll have all the names and stuff on it. In other words, you asked him the question.
Yeah, you can see my question and then her response.
So, the slope of the road will be about a three percent grade from south towards the north. To the Aaron's side. You get down where it flattens out and then you'll have a slight crown at the bottom. Coming off, uh, the tire apron for just a short bit.
We're not gonna charge Aaron for the water, are we?
That's right, right?
Spring water.
Yeah. Uh, and who, are you gonna hire a contractor? You doing the work?
We're gonna hire contractors.
Okay.
Okay, but they have to know that there's underground wires.
They won't be digging like that.
Hold it up in the ditch?
They'll be just cleaning up the, the ditch, the, probably, there's a good chance, when you get down that far where the underground is. That's just gonna be a clean out of the stone, not cleaning the stone out, all the stone out.
Before, before they do it, we can get dig safes.
I gotta get dig safe anyway.
Dig safe has to do.
I have to get dig safe.
That's my law.
Cause I think, uh, Joanne and, and Finn's got underground.
Well, they got, they're behind the.
They'll, they'll find it. They'll dig safe them.
Dig safe them, market.
Yep. Yep.
Like I said, I, I'm just, um, you know, this road has been an issue for too long. And it's time it's gotta come to an end, because like I said, I've put a lot of money into this, this project. And I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna go broke doing it, but I'm not gonna have my land uprooted either. Been there too long. When there's not a problem, we haven't had a problem. That's what I'm saying, the, the town is going into an expense. To where there was never a problem on that road for flooding. I don't think we've ever had any problem with flooding, Eric.
No.
And the biggest problem I had, which I brought to the town and I won't mention their names, is the sand and salt coming off the road. Going over into, you know, Michael's lot where his water was. And I don't think that should happen this year because that's.
Only thing, the only place that gets a little bit of salt is right on that apron only. We do not salt.
They're plowing up through, Cash, when they come out, when they're plowing up the main road, they're plowing sand and salt. And when they come on that corner, they scoop in and they drop it right there. And I've had the pictures, I've showed you all the pictures, and even when he falls off the main road, he falls in that corner. Which you saw the stop sign was knocked over, and that's where it was plowed, and that's sand and salt going into that brook. It's not what my son Swail went in there because it didn't, but it's coming from, and I'm not giving no names.
For one thing, we don't use sand on our tire roads, and we don't use salt on our dirt roads.
Okay, so the salt's coming off the, the main road then, Cash? You know, you know, I'm not trying to condemn your workers.
Right.
But, you know, you don't spend ten, fifteen minutes on a corner, just keep pushing it into the brook off the main road, Cash. Now, you don't see it, but I took the pictures, so you saw. So, you know, my son got, you know, I was told that my son. Swail was putting it into the brook. All that was doing is coming off the hill, and there was never much water down there. I don't know if you ever saw a lot of water going in that swale, but he put it there to keep it away from our well, his well. So, you know, we have to protect our land a little bit.
Yeah, I think you got two different problems too, because the state's the one that I think these guys are shagging here because, right, the state doesn't want. Summer rain runoff, running on dirt, they want it on stone, right?
The, the issue is that when the state passed the Clean Water Act, that several of us. Spoke, spoke very clearly out against because of what, it was, it was an act that was designed for Burlington and Barry. And the big cities to try and clean up their waterways, and like anything in the state, Mopelia passed something for the cities. And then put it on all the municipalities in the state, and it came down to us. And that's why I, I sympathize with you, Pat, because they're sa- they're saying, and I hear you saying, and, and this was back. Years ago when the, the ditches got dug on Middle Road, my family was very vocal against the ditches. Michael will remember that we were the ones showing up at meetings and arguing against ditches because we didn't have water problems. And the issue is that the state passed all these regulations and literally all they're doing is looking at a map and saying. In front of your house is a steeper grade than whatever their minimum is. Town of Clarendon, this is a section of road that you have to put water protection measures into.
Anything under five percent can use a grass seed.
That's the issue, and that's why, like you say, we're, we get left-handed holding the bag. They, they make us back clean up.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to.
Uh, but I didn't get to talk to the, to the state because I wanted, you know, the width of the road. And when you can fit two of your town trucks side by side, I think that road is wider than. Did he say anything about the width of the road there?
Well, we're not changing the width of the road.
No, I just wondered if the state had said anything about it.
I don't know if it really got discussed.
We didn't discuss that.
We didn't dive into that. We've more talked about what would satisfy the requirements that the state put on us. With the least disruption.
Impact.
And knowing that, um, you and Mike really did not wanna see ditches on your side.
No.
Um, because that was what was on the table to start with, was ditches down both sides. Um, and the state, after discussing it, came back and kind of, I guess the best way to say it is the state compromised. And said, well, you can do the pitch and you can do this and will consider it fixed.
The problem is, you know, the state's the one that okayed that root field there. They're the ones that put it in.
That's, I think, a prime example of the different departments of the state do not talk to each other, yeah.
Well, like I said, and in that case, then we could tie it up in court for a long time if they want, you know. Because like I said, I got all the paperwork, all the years gone by, and all the, the people on the hill up there never had a water issue. So like I said, it just got out of hand. The corner, that, that corner.
But the Robbie's, but to Robbie's point now, I think. We are agreeing to settle just, uh, you know, the, the way we talked to the state. We had a guy come up there, professional, looked it over, we worked this out on select board, we had the workshop, you were here. And I think right now. I think it's gonna be settled.
And I also think it's fair to put on the radar to everybody now that the last piece of this is hopefully. Next year or the year after, a replacement of the big box at the bottom.
At the bottom.
At the bottom, yeah. That's the last piece.
The big boiler pipe that's in there.
The big, the big pipe that on the brook.
What you gotta do there, pour it out of a creek and put steel in and all that?
It'd be a precast.
Precast box.
That's like they've been doing, a creek road up here.
Okay.
Yeah, similar to what they have to do over at the dry culvert over here.
Less impact though, you can set that in a day and not, yeah.
Hopefully, day or two, yeah.
Yeah.
So have they ever discussed taking that corner out up there? You know, the big sharp corner?
That one about by the farm?
I don't know.
Where the guardrail is.
Us, that big corner there, cause that was, uh, the topic, remember, when Michael see?
Yeah.
To take that corner.
That's right, like when Daryl was, I vaguely remember that.
That's when I got the ditch on my side.
Yeah.
I vaguely remember that. I was, I hadn't been on the board very long.
He thought that everything was gonna be answered by putting that box.
Oh, that, uh, sister.
And then, uh, because it was something he had in his yard, it's wherever the hell it was, but anyway. Then they put that across, you remember Bob, they put a culvert across and that was gonna be the.
Well, that's where the manhole covers us.
That, there was something about vaguely, I remember something though, in the midst of the discussions on that about. We were gonna, there was gonna be more problems peeling the bank or something too, there was something that hap- something that came up about.
Probably with erosion being so steep.
Something to do with either erosion or they were.
No, the the landowner didn't want us taking down a bunch of trees and all that stuff.
Okay, I don't remember.
That's, remember Bob?
Yeah.
Just.
Because, because there was talk like Robert says about erosion, not.
There was talk of erosion, issue, and then there was also a question of whether or not might hit ledge in there.
Yeah.
There was talk of that too.
And then what happened was when he put that old septic tanks box or whatever the hell it was. Uh, he um made it so that was like a pool right there.
It was supposed to catch it.
More down the hill, it was raised up a little bit, so it would pool right there and then go across. And the way the road was slanted initially, that worked.
Yeah. Yeah, it did. I know Joanne uh did say to me she couldn't make it down, but she has concern about um. Where the well, you you see the well up on top past uh.
The spring?
The spring.
Up above, by that, almost by that of the driveway.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, uh, that used to be ours.
Hmm.
And it was, you know, the lines were laid down in the wood line across the road on our side. Okay, when it got sold, um, I think Ray tears. Tears, somebody bought it in the days, and then they sold it to ten and Joanne, but they have the water rights to that. You know, you know, it's, that's up on the, that corner. She said that they got their water line buried alongside the ditch there, so she just went to town and there. There's water lines that were down through there.
And there'll be, when we, they do the project there for cleaning that ditch on the upper part. They won't be digging down any deeper than originally it was deep. You know, just re-stone line it or whatever it takes.
It's mostly just a cleanup and, just a cleanup and putting fresh stone in, right?
Yep, and if it was gonna go deep, the project that was done, I don't know how many years ago, when they did that, they wouldn't hit them that, hit them that.
Well, she said the lines aren't that deep, but she was kinda concerned with it.
Apparently, they knew it when they did it, whoever did the project.
All right, we're gonna move along, but thank you guys for coming down and hearing this out. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Road commissioner, road commissioner's report. Your turn.
Okay. Uh. Just for update, West Hemuth Road, the project we've been on, actually, we completed today except for one driveway culvert. Which we're immense of the landowner moving his driveway approximately thirty feet. To uh get us better water flow. Um, when he put his RV in and set a telephone pole, Mount Powers set telephone pole. Too close and it bound us into a pinch point. Um, other than that, that road is is complete, got seeded, grass seeded today.
You gotta move the pole?
No.
Cause then you have to move.
It's gonna be an expensive project to move the pole, cause it's got underground cable.
So, yeah.
So, um, other than that, that that project is complete.
Good. Anything else, Chris?
Um. We need to keep moving along on that washout by the guard rails of South Creek Road. Where this flood has really irritated it and it keeps, the bank keeps sloughing in. The other thing is on South Creek Road, um, where the new tire is.
The guard rails. With cable guard rail.
New tire.
New tire down past.
Past the ledges.
Past the ledges.
Yep.
Um, cross the flats there, just before you start to make the bend up the hill a little bit, that all of a sudden developed a sink hole with a flood. That's right where that culvert is, we inspected that culvert and if I remember right, planning commission did too. And everything was fine at that time, but for some reason, with the flooding and stuff, it.
Did it, did the culvert collapse or?
Um, I don't know what, actually, because the water's just receding now and you can't get down on that side. And that's the quick side of the.
Yeah.
In the first travel lane.
Gotcha.
Actually, the, and we were hauling there that day, and there was nothing, and all of a sudden at four o'clock, I get a phone call.
Hole in the road.
Hole in the road, I was like, what are you talking about? Went down there and about size of a fifty-five gallon drum, so I took down a barrel and set it there, so it might fall into it about eighteen, eighteen inches deep. We dug it out by hand, the tire and stuff, it's had sunk, and filled it in with big rock for the time being. Little bit of sure pack on top. That's gonna be, and then um, that's actually gonna require four foot squash culvert.
What's there now?
And it's four foot now.
Yeah.
Three foot or four foot, four foot is there now. And with that being said, with it being so wet there, we need to give it time for one thing to dry out. The weather ever cooperates, and second of all, it's down deep. And we're, when it does get dug out, it's gonna be a lot of bank sloughing in, so we're actually gonna have to have somebody with a big excavator to.
True, it will. This year's project or next year's project?
No, if we can do it this year, we'll do it this year before winter. Um, South Creek Road, or the culvert, box culvert on Creek Road up by Hawkins. They're looking at starting that August first next week.
Yeah.
Those are the flooding delay. On Walker Mountain Road from the section from about the hotel, the new bridge there to one thirty-three. Uh, talk Tim Rice today, they're gonna start, get the machine in to start reclaiming by Wednesday. Hope to have the machine, it got, yeah, they're supposed to done it last week, but it got caught in Bradler over the, the flooding and stuff and working down there. So they got delayed at least ten days in that part. Um, the cold river up here on Middle Road, the bridge is ongoing, we got things and. Started motion, the wheels turning.
One way up by Route seven.
Known by my firm.
Okay, got it.
If you look there, the banks, the road is way back in.
Yeah, I went down in the woods and looked at that.
Yep.
That was a mess.
I had Josh Carver know, got hold of him, river management, and he said, yes, he's, he's gonna help us drop a plan to to do that. And then, I can't remember the fellow's name, and Rutland, to get ahold of him through NRCS about the. Plan of uh. Rem, I don't wanna say removing, well, yeah, removing or making that river come down a little straighter into that bridge. Cause right now it's meandering and causing this problem.
Yeah.
Lot of material sitting right in the middle of that river, which we've all been discussing, Bob.
How many, how many times have we said that?
Yep.
Yeah, the last time that was. Uh, probably mid nineties, when uh they got in the river, but that's when they were.
Irene name. Irene, she's.
How many meetings did we have down there after Irene that they wouldn't let us do anything?
Yeah. That's when.
And Josh?
But the big, the big uh excavating business was down in ninety. Four ninety-five, that's when they were.
The guards hauled it to the airport.
Yeah, that's when they were building, uh, extending the runway on the airport.
Yep.
Then all of a sudden, it was okay.
Yeah.
Funny how that works.
I'm trying to think of anything else, that's all I have for notes. Um, yeah.
Anybody have any questions for the road commissioner?
Um, on the corner of one thirty-three, where one thirty-three and Walker Mountain meet, where the church is, on that right side. Is there anything they can do to not whatever grows there down? It's a dangerous spot, you can't see the traffic.
On one thirty?
Yeah, it's real bad, I mean, it's real scary at that intersection.
I was gonna say, on, so, is that on the states or is that on us?
That's a state site.
And actually, last year, we, when the mower was over there, I had Joel.
True.
Go once he could, Castleton, whoever they hired, did trim back some. But actually, a resident from Wallingford Reg's scooter, he went out there and cut it by hand last summer.
Are we gonna have the roadside mower over there that we could hit a?
And it's not gonna do what he's talking about.
No.
It's way out too far.
Yeah, and that is on the other side of the old fence that they used to have. And uh this guy who runs this, does the state road is over in. Uh, for that section is over uh um. On the other side of Timmef.
Well, even, even them mowers can't reach it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, my thought was, I don't know who owns it or who dictates what happens is to put something in there to permanently. Get rid of that crap, because it's a yearly battle.
I don't know who, I don't know who owns that now, that was Chapman's.
Originally, that was, you know, Chapman's and stuff, and there was no problem over the years because it kept it for the pasture.
Yeah.
And now it's turned into a kind of wetland.
Yeah, the guy up on the hill, I think, owns it.
Yeah, that's right.
He does.
I know it here.
Yeah.
I get calls on it a lot, I'm like, call Castleton or I call, I talk Castleton and.
Yeah, that's.
Also, that isn't even in the right of way, it's beyond the right of way.
It's beyond the right of way.
Yeah.
Actually, they're mowing to the fence, and that's as far as you can reach out to eighteen feet or whatever it is where our mowers.
But he has the big mower, the state guy.
Yeah, that, they'll same width, like, reach out.
He did that, the inside corners you're headed, like you're turning up the.
Yeah, head direction.
That way.
I mean, it's almost like a guess when you go through there, I guess in God, you just.
Yeah.
Gotta take the risk.
The only other thing is.
Huh?
Traffic doesn't go.
Oh, no, they fly down the hill down through there, yeah.
Even, I mean, I've been hauling all the quarry a little bit, and I can see because I'm sitting up high, but you get down in the cars open or pick up. I was on the road last week, coming through with the car.
It might not hurt for Kenny, for you to just drop it to the state garage and just.
No, it'd be Castleton.
It'd have to be the Castleton garage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just say, we've received multiple complaints from residents on the one thirty-three corner. Where one thirty-three and Walker Mountain Road meet.
I called them last year, and that's when he, he went down there.
I did, but they only reached back that eighteen feet and then easily backed about twenty-eight feet to thirty feet.
He was talking to the landowner, who said that at some point he could go into that pasture.
There's no way they can drop off that road and.
Yeah, that's a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little wet in there.
Yeah, I wouldn't even put an excavator in there.
Well, at the very least, drop it to them and just let them know, just say, listen, we're getting multiple reports about this.
God bless them.
And see where it goes from there.
Yep.
Don't touch it again.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, it, you know, it's handwork. So.
Yep, okay.
Anything else, Chris?
I think I'm all set.
Okay, nobody, uh.
Yeah, sometime when you're out with the mower, coming off Mel Freesher Road, down the Creek Road going west. You cannot see to the south.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can now, of course, he went down and cleaned it.
Hand did it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good, I'm one up on you, Bob.
Is the mower still down?
It's functional, but every time you touch the brakes, you can't steer. And Dave's doing research on it as a speed to see if he can figure it out, there's some retention valve or somewheres locking up. You'd be driving it along and if you touch the brakes, all of a sudden you're manhandling it and almost can't steer it. And then, it might go five minutes or twenty minutes, all of a sudden, you're still perfect, you touch the brakes again.
Brakes are overrated anyways.
So I've been, last time I.
With Mike.
Last week when I was using it, I did my best stay off the brakes and, you know, paid. When I come to some place I'm gonna stop, I'd actually shift right down to first gear, cause it's kind of automatic shift on it.
Yeah.
So I could actually creep down and, yeah. That, that's gonna be a discussion we need to talk about in November.
The question is, what we do in between now and November, cause the roadsides are terrible.
Yeah, we'll have to.
We got, I got a phone call.
It probably won't be bad, cause I, we're talking, I was talking with the crew about it, today we'll do one, a one pass right now. And the intersections, you know, mold the corners back and stuff like that for right now.
Well, I was gonna say, either that or do we need to rent a tractor for three weeks, two weeks? Put our mower on the tractor and rent the tractor for two weeks.
Yeah, that's something I haven't looked at, but we could actually, is it worth us even owning that tractor for, if we could do that? I don't know what the, you know, price is for a three week. Um, I just don't wanna go back to years ago when there were more than five feet and that was it, cause we got, we got most of our brush pushed back.
I was gonna say, we can't go back to those days.
On the most part.
All right, let's move along.
Is that something you want me to do a little research on to see if, what, just throw it out there, I mean.
Well, I mean, if our tractor's gonna be down, it sounds to me like we got a valve somewhere that's gonna be replaced, it's just a question of finding.
And we did, we, we thought we had it and.
Is it the steering column?
Dave went into that steering column and stuff. And changed that out and it worked great for just a short bit, so I don't know if that went bad again or not. So.
That's an old tractor though, I mean.
Nineties.
When I ever.
My tractor's fifty-three years old, so it's old. I use every day.
Well, how old are you for gosh sakes?
Not as old as you.
Probably not.
We had this conversation earlier, didn't we, Kevin? All right, let's move along.
Okay.
Uh.
If it moves, something will happen.
Is there any public comments? Okay, old business, nothing under that, new business, setting up the tax rate.
Oh, this is gonna hurt.
Okay, do we have to?
Unfortunately. Uh, so, what you have in front of you is a little packet that has the municipal and education rates for fiscal year twenty-four. The second page is a side by side comparison of last year's rates versus this year's rates and the difference. And the last page of your report is um how we come up with our municipal rate. So our municipal town tax rate this year is point four nine three one. Total homestead property tax for fiscal year twenty-four, that includes your homestead education rate as well, is two to, two point zero five one eight. The non-residential property tax rate is two point zero eight one seven. Um, so as I'm sure you've noticed, the um rates have jumped significantly. And that is in large part due to the education rate. Um, this year, the education rate for homestead jumped eleven cents, whereas our town tax rate only went up a penny. Um, what that means is for a homeowner who has a property value of two hundred thousand. That means you're looking at about a two hundred and fifty dollar increase on your tax bill this year. Um, also something to note, basically, the education, homestead education rate last year. Um, went down that twelve cents, and then this year it's coming right back. So, what we saved last year, we're right back where we were.
But all the mergers are gonna fix everything and the education rate is gonna get so much better in the state.
And we have less children and, and, yeah.
The only way that you can lower the education rate is close schools, period.
So close them.
As I do, as I do every year, um, these rates aren't something that we just come up with, they are based on what you vote. So when you vote in March, this is what you're voting on. The municipal rate comes directly from what you vote on all your ballot articles. Education rates, those all come from what you vote for the education budget. Um, we get told from the state what the education rate is going to be, we have, the people here, this board has no. Uh, control over that education rate, so we put forth the town budget for you all. Um, to, to vote on in March, and that's where you get your town tax rate. Anyway, um, they would also be due and payable by Saturday, October fourteen. And as in the past, I typically set the due date for a Saturday, I'm here and open that day. Um, for those who would still like to come in and hand off your payment. I'm here most of the time anyways, so you can come see me. But, yeah. Yeah, so I'd ask the board uh, to approve this year's tax rates.
Your second? For discussion?
A second for discussion.
Is there any discussion? There's no way that we could lower that.
It, it, well, and the one thing that I should say, and I know the treasurer very eloquently just said it. But what should be also paid very close attention to is what I consider the fiscal responsibility of this board. In the face of that increase, education wise, this board only changed one cent. That and, and I think if we look back over the scope of a number of years. We have done our absolute best to try to prevent our local rate from changing that much. And when it has changed, ultimately our hands have been forced to do it, due to whatever reason. But the problem is, and I'm not gonna get on my soapbox for very long, but I will simply say, state. This state has a problem when it comes to the rates that Montpelier has to set. And until they deal with the problem.
It's gonna continue.
It's gonna continue.
No question.
Um, what is very disheartening, I know George, you just spoke to it, what's very disheartening is the people got, in my opinion, sold a bill of goods five years ago when we got told, oh, just vote on this and this is gonna fix it. This is gonna solve the problem.
I mean, back when that was going on, I've said in, in the school board meetings, it isn't gonna make a significant difference whatsoever. The only thing that's gonna make a difference is consolidation, real consolidation will make a difference, as simple as that. And, and part of the, that plan was, okay, if we do this, then the next step will be easier to consolidate and close schools, I think that was some of the background uh discussions and closed doors here and there. But so far, our legislatures in the state haven't had the courage to do it, it's that simple. And I hope that everybody saw that on camera. Because that's where it's at. And I've been in education for thirty years, or was, so, but still, you know, what's, what, what's there is there.
And unfortunately, our, even our local school board does not have that much control either.
And no, I, I don't wanna say because none of the comments should be directed at the local level, this is, this is a state government problem.
Absolutely.
This is a state government problem, this, in my opinion, this isn't a local problem.
I agree.
When you're losing more and more population in schools. That's also a driver too, don't it?
Well, yes and no, what happens is, you gotta have a certain uh, coverage, I guess would be the word, of all facets of the educational process. And that same coverage can cover one student or twenty. And the issue is, when the population goes down, the same coverage i- is being maintained. In other words, you need a certain number of extra kinds of things from this normal curriculum. You know, you need nurses, you need, you know, and again, the, at some point, the number will reach where that you'll see an effect of less students, but not, you haven't seen it yet. You know, if, if Shrewsbury, and I don't mean to use them as an example, but they're a small school, if they lost half their population. Then you'd see some change, but losing two or three students, there, two or three here, two or three there. Then you see a fairly large number of decrease, but that fairly large number of decrease is still being covered by the same services. Did I get that right, Bob? I think I did.
Yeah, I, I think that there's certainly, there's certainly elements to that, that, that are accurate, but I think and again, we're getting sidetracked, but I think the reality is per pupil spending has gone absolutely insane.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Um, and, and that, in my opinion, I guess is the one area that I would say there is some local control. That could be potentially exercised, but, but the reality is, um there's a fear of um, competition in the marketplace.
Oh, yes, and I, I would, you know.
And, and I'm obviously directly involved.
Yes, you are.
And I'm, I'm well aware of the competition in the marketplace and what currently is being done to try and root out all competition in the mar- in the marketplace. Um, but as can be seen in the business world and as can be seen through our history. Competition's not necessarily a bad thing. And so, I think, you know, that's why across the state and you've seen across the country uh, greater push for true pure competition with universal school choice in multiple states now. Because it's forcing, it, it's forcing in some cases the system to change. Um, whether the powers that be to our north like it or not, you know? I mean, that's, that's, that's one of the ways, so, but I'll, I, I digress.
Is there a motion?
There was. So yeah, I'll call the motion.
Okay. All those in favor, uh, first of all, Katie, you have all that first and second, all that, right? Okay, alright, so um Robert moved the motion, so all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just for the record, I'll go aye as well, just to move this along. Uh, propane pricing.
Two quotes in there, I reached out to three. Um, Kizer being our current suburban and then Lake Champlain Coal. Um, Lake Champlain Coal got back to me that they are too short staffed to be taking on new customers. Um, Kizer gave, or, yeah, Kizer gave me um, pricing for two thousand gallons of propane. Uh, beginning August first to May thirty-first. And then Suburban gave me pricing for twenty-two hundred gallons of propane for twelve months. Um, and the fee for swapping out the tanks, because we don't own our own.
What's the difference in price per gallon?
I believe Kizer was one seven seven nine. And Suburban came in at one six two.
One six two five?
For that difference, I'm gonna make the motion that we stick with Kizer because changing out the tanks is too big of a headache for that little bit of a difference.
Yep, I agree.
I would agree.
Alright, you second that? Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Katie, you didn't indicate, do I have to sign this somewhere?
Um, yes, Kizer does have a contract attached that you need to sign initial. I do wanna know, um, swapping out the propane tanks, if you were to go with Suburban, was gonna be like ninety-nine dollars? But I didn't know if there's a charge to remove the current ones.
Um, no, but it's a huge headache and I've, I, I believe they've gotten better in the last year that I've heard, but I've also heard some service complaints from that.
Wanna add to your motion?
Yeah, I'm fine with amending my motion to state that you sign on behalf of the board. I don't know who seconded.
I did, it's fine.
Everybody's still good with that. I don't hear any objections, so.
Alright, so.
I think in the future, we'll look, look, look at, purchase our own tank, that way you can.
That's the other option, is you purchase your own tanks.
At home myself.
Then you could have anybody deliver you want.
Yeah, so it's, it's not just changing, you know, the ninety-nine bucks to change it, because then they gotta weigh how much is in there. They give you less for what's in there than what you're paying, it's, it's, it's a mess. Are all in favor of the motion? Say aye. Anyone oppose?
How many people have to sign the grants and aid? Grants and aid is the project we just talked about, right? That's where it's going this year, or is it going to the other one?
So better roads to the tier road.
Okay, better roads is going, which we already executed.
Grants and aid for FY twenty-three is going to Quarterline Road. This is FY twenty-four for next construction.
Next year, we have it slated for.
Is it just the chairman again, or is it all of us? I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman to execute the grants and aid twenty-four agreement.
Second.
Second, 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 we've got three seconds.
Take your, take your choice.
Mike, you don't need a second now.
Don't give me the one. All in favor of the first, second, third, and fourth motions, say aye. Anyone opposed?
I assume the next one's the same deal, because this is the, this is the box culvert at the bottom of Tier Road, right?
Yes, this is, well, this is for the engineering and scoping only.
Correct. And it's same deal, chairman sign it on behalf of board? I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman of the board to sign the structures grant execution for the Tier Road Box Culvert Study.
Alright. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? And that's for the structures grant as well, right?
Yep. Yes, we're finishing our structure grant this year, and then this one won't expire till twenty twenty-five.
Alright, Juneteenth holiday.
In the interest of time, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that this discussion be placed under our budget time discussions for compensation and holidays during our budget workshops in November.
A second then.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright.
I like that.
Town officers' report, Kate, uh, hi.
Yep, so in front of you, I provided you with a budget status report, um, as we close out last fiscal year. If you flip to the last page, you'll see that we budgeted to reduce the fund balance by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we ended up only reducing the fund balance by thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
I'm sorry, oh, I got it, never mind.
Last page.
Much of that is due to, um, the amount of delinquent taxes that did come in, um, this last year. So my question to you folks is rather than, um, just letting that money sit in the general fund and continue to sit in the general fund, did you want to take any portion of that? Um, and.
Go to Florida?
Yeah, either, um uh, my, I mean, the two funds that come to mind for me are either the equipment fund, which we know is underfunded. Um, or the municipal buildings fund, um, or a combination of the both. Um, but just something for you to think about, you don't have to do that or decide on that this meeting, but um, I would ask you to consider, uh, what you would like to do uh, for at least the next meeting so that we can close out the fiscal year.
Was there any highway fund balance specifically that went into the equipment fund per the voter? No.
No, because the total highway expenditures were. Hundred and three percent, so.
Okay. So we can make that decision, I, I mean, for discussion, I would say that my thought is, maybe we split. Because I think that, I think that certainly some needs to go into that established, um buildings fund, but also go into the equipment fund.
Agreed.
If, if we have that authority and we can do that, I think that that's the smartest use for that money so that it's there for I mean, we've had that conversation, the fact that we, this building, the future of it and what we've talked about as far as some of the ARPA money being there to do some projects around here, um, I think that there's.
I, I would ask the treasurer if there is any suggestion as to the uh, split, whether it be fifty-fifty or what.
The only thing that I would ask you to consider is, so after we add the a hundred thousand dollars into the equipment fund this fiscal year after um, tax payments come in, um, you're gonna have four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in the equipment fund. But you also have to keep in mind that the greater has not been purchased yet, so that's gonna eat up the majority of the money in the equipment fund. Um, and then the municipal buildings fund currently has two hundred and twenty-five, a little over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in it. Um, majority of that was ARPA funds that were moved, um, and then some interest that posted at the end of the fiscal year. So, just to give you an idea of where, where you're at.
I know we're getting off track, but other than the greater, what is the next slated item?
A truck. Mac.
The Mac.
What was that?
I was gonna say, it's gotta be.
Roadside mower.
Roadside mower.
So those are the next probably big items.
Yeah, we can actually, the guys want to do some, but the loader, but they're like we've got more important things to do than.
Give me a stroke.
Not even that old, how old is this?
Give me a shot, it's got just thirty-nine hundred hours, thirty hu- nine hundred and sixty hours on it, less than four thousand hours on it. I'm like.
So here's, so, so, so I know this is.
We gotta stop using it.
We've had, we had issues with it, with the turbo and all that stuff, and we actually got it under. So some of that stuff was actually still in warranty and got all that fixed, knock on wood.
So the other discussion, and I know this is November type discussions when we're doing budgeting. We had talked about this loader, we were gonna be better about doing the preventative, keeping the buckets painted up and making sure that the rust wasn't gonna get away from us.
Yeah, even the rims and everything needs to be painted off, I'm hoping that'll be a winter project this winter.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is that something for us, or is that something we gotta send it somewhere to get it sand blasted and all that?
Depends on how the winter goes, if we're, like last year's kinda open winter, we were able to do other things.
I mean, that's, you know, you know, ounce of prevention, I mean, that's, that's the type of stuff that you know, that last loader we got rid of is still living a healthy life wherever it ended up, so.
I had no problem with order.
No, no.
I run stuff that's fifty, sixty years old, it don't matter.
I know. I know.
But I know with the truck, and when I first come here, they were like, yeah, every eight, ten years, I was like, what the hell are you talking about? Well, now I know because of all the grounds and issues with the wire and stuff like that. And the salt and stuff and.
The salt just eats stuff. It doesn't.
It get, you don't see it, you know, basically on the frame, because you know, your washroom and stuff, that's internal. It's like brake job just did on the Western Star, everything just froze up, they'd do all new brakes on the back of that, that was a thousand bucks.
So again, not to go down this road too far, because we're gonna go down this road in November, but the greater we've already voted to purchase, as it is.
For three forty-two, I think it was.
So, like you said, if there's four in there now, you're gonna chew up a lot of that.
Eighty-five percent, ninety percent of it.
Eighty-five percent of it, so if, you know, we give a little bit of this to the equipment fu- you know, a portion of this to each of these funds, it's gonna set us probably in a better track for what you're looking at.
And that's where we have to sit down and discuss and get prices about renting a side roadside mower, rather than owning one. If we can rent one twice a year for two weeks, two ends of the year, it might be cheaper to, to rent a mower, run it ourselves. Than owning one. I don't know what the figures are though.
It's not just mowing.
Very little for the stuff. We were for the broom and stuff, but now that we, we're not doing the shoulders ourselves because it's so much more efficient to hire it down and cheaper. Yeah.
So two weeks you can cover it, the town and the mowing, roughly?
The first time around, you want at least three weeks.
Three weeks, okay.
To get your, you know, three swaps back and.
When you're getting quotes for a tractor or?
Well, you're looking at, one, one of the roadside mowers is just over two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and that's why we jumped at it when we had the chance to buy.
And we didn't, I don't, yeah, and I don't feel we, for the buyout. Yeah, and I don't feel we, for the buyout, we're still in good shape because we got that, you know, piece of equipment.
Which we bought it out, what, three years ago now? Something like that, we bought it out three years ago. And we owned it jointly two ye- two or three years before that.
It's paid for itself.
Sorry, and I mean to sidetrack us.
Do you have, yeah, have anything else? Okay, uh, before we go to Katie, Kevin, do you have anything? The, uh. Just let everybody know that that big pine tree was taken down. Katie, do you have anything?
Um, just a couple things, uh, I was talking with Horst at the transfer station last week and Rutland County Solid Waste has a Discover Books Program out right now. Um, it's a like recycling books program, you have a bin at your transfer station and the books are like, uh, repurposed and then sent to nonprofits in North America and internationally. And there's no cost to have one and no cost for pickup, so Horst would like one, if you guys are okay with that. Um, I've gathered a little more information that I can send you.
I assume it's gotta go inside somewhere.
Um, I think it's like a metal bin and.
Okay.
Horst was thinking it would go, um, like right outside their office. I don't know if he needs approval for that, if you wanna discuss at your next meeting, or if I can just continue the process.
Let him do it, that's what I say.
Um, the other item, uh, our next meeting is August fourteenth, which is the Monday before fair. And there's a couple members and staff members involved with the fair, so I wanted to confirm that that meeting's still on, or if you wanna postpone.
Oh, can we have three of us here?
Likely what you would have too.
Yeah. But we just curtail the agenda.
Can we, the other thing that I could say, which I think we did last year, can we just kinda play it by ear and see what's, how much stuff there is for the agenda? Cause this tends to be, I know tonight was an exception, we had a very busy agenda, but normally this time of year, things are kinda slow. So, if it's.
Well, we got our grant signed and all that stuff.
Your grants are all signed and everything else, so maybe we get close and there's hardly anything on it, you guys, we can just make a decision to skip a meeting.
Um, last thing is, uh, scheduling an appropriations policy workshop. Um, I know you guys wanted to get that ready for early fall, or do that around early fall. Um, so, I don't know if you wanna do that at the last meeting in August, a workshop? Depending on if this August fourteenth one is canceled.
Why don't we look at some information first and then?
Are there boilerplates out there?
GLCT has one.
So, like, cause my thought process is maybe we can get some work done out of the way before we actually sit down to talk about it. Like if you could pitch us two options. That we could edit, cause then our workshop could go a lot smoother if we just sit down and edit something. And I personally would prefer not to do anything till September.
I can certainly have stuff done at a time.
That's the point.
So I'll put it as the first meeting in September beforehand.
That works for me.
Art, do you have anything?
Nope, I got nothing. We skipped the, uh, town clerk.
Oh, she's hiding behind.
He's too skinny to hide behind.
Did you, do you have any, I'm sorry, do you have anything?
Thanks for asking.
Well, it was a nice conversation. Do you have anything, Rob?
I don't have anything tonight.
Hi. Hi, George. I don't have anything particularly of any high interest.
Oh, you know, before I go, when we went to that meeting up at Rutland Town.
I can tell, you know, yes, we did go, we had, uh, probably about thirty people in attendance. And they were a mixture of Clarendon citizens and Rutland Town citizens. As far as I know, they were all, uh, uh, Quarterline Road residents. There may have been a couple of not non ones, not many, we had people there such as Mike and myself. Art Peterson was there and, uh, Beldon was there and, um. Oh, uh, Dr. Bowe was there. So, that was the attendance and I don't have much of anything else to say, if, I'll turn it over to Mike, if he wants to have.
Um, we, uh, did mention that we were considering car count thing and, but we didn't wanna, uh, misinterpret that, the reasoning behind that. And I. Their officials sitting there said, oh, we would have liked to seen that. Because if we give them a hard count too, to see how much is on road. But then they started talking about us doing maintenance on that road. And correct me if I'm wrong, George, and we made it clear that, uh, that would have to be, uh, if you, if they made a proposal our full board would have to look at that and consider. And I think we said that two or three times as, uh. Yep. The discussion went on, and it was also pointed out that they have a contract with, uh. To do a road.
Well, I, I think they talked about.
They asked Mendon, but they, they asked Mendon, but Mendon said no, but I read the minutes from the, the meeting. It did, it did look like they're going to send us a proposal, which we had already said we're not doing. So, I, I, I don't know.
Have to see what, what comes and, like you said, it's gotta go before this full board.
Do we, do we want, knowing that, I'm speaking for myself here. Not, not as rest of you, as a board, knowing that there's ninety-nine percent chance that we're not interested because of different things, such as the snow plowing and sanding. Because right now, we have the route set up where, I'll, I'll give an example quick, cause I don't wanna be out here all night. The truck goes up over, uh, Tier Road, sanding, plowing. Does Schoolhouse, turns on Quarterline, heads out to Town Line, turns around, comes back, comes back down Schoolhouse Road and has just about, not quite, or just about enough to get off Schoolhouse Road, comes back down, reloads. And goes Quarterline, the rest of Quarterline Hill, up and back, and then east to West Hemuth Road. And then we catch up, the third load is the, you know, Mufford, Anderson, higher, uh, the hotel, Peters Lane. We got a system down, we bought this bigger truck. Because the old truck was a single axle, made five trips on that mountain. And now we've been efficient now to get it down to three trip, three trips, and it's done. If we do, do, did do that, that would eliminate about twenty minutes of snow plowing on non Clarendon roads, and I don't think it's fair for the rest of the town of Clarendon to even suffer that even timeframe. And, I mean, there's a lot of ti- some, not a lot of times, sometimes we don't, can't get where we need to be and people are calling already. And here we are plowing another town. And that's, that's. Car counter, not even interested, if Rutland Town wants a car counter.
That was also mentioned.
Hear me out, Mike.
Yeah, but. What I'm, what I'm, I'm trying to say is. We did not. Uh, manipulate this conversation to them, to have them, uh, all of a sudden, yeah, show up with a bid. That's their prerogative, they, they wanna do that, but it's our prerogative to say no.
You're, you're saying, what you're saying is headed off and.
Headed off right now, before they do a lot of legwork, a lot of research into it and, and that, that's, that's my feeling. And I, and I thought we kinda headed it off before, at, at our last meeting of. There, there's contractors out there, I even made a phone call to a contractor and he goes, yeah, he's, he's willing to, you know, work with them.
How many times do we have to say no?
And a no is a no, and.
But don't forget. Important not to forget that some of the taxpayers in this town are asking us to go, not go forward, but are asking us to consider, and so.
They asked us, we said no? What, what part of no don't you understand?
Well, I think that it's important for us, the select board, to listen to the taxpayers. Yes, we said no, but then now there's, if there's a, a proposition that comes forward from the other town, we can look at it and then, uh, to your point, we can say no again. It's, it, it's not fair to people who pay taxes in this town to just absolutely close the door.
It's not fair for the rest of the town that's paying taxes to ask us to do somebody, another town's roads.
But you're not doing it, you would not be doing it for nothing.
No, but we're taking our road crew away from our roads to do somebody else's roads.
Thank you.
Our road crew, you know, for years I was told we needed four guys on our road crew, one guy passes away, now we have three. Now we're gonna say, okay, w- we, we don't even need the three, we're gonna send them to another town, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well then, all you have to do is vote no.
We did. You can bring it up again and it'll go down again. And then the citizens will leave here furious at us again. So, whatever.
I mean, I hate, I, and I don't like people pulling, you know, over me and say, come up front and say, no, so I won't do any more legwork. It's like us discussing it right now, we've, I don't know about twelve minutes we've been onto this. You know, which isn't much, but for them to get a proposal together, they're gonna think about this for, I don't know, they'll have an hour or two hour meeting, for what? Let's send it right now, done. That's my feeling.
That's your opinion, and I think.
And the other thing is. I tell you right now, what's gonna happen, it's gonna set preference, because we have a neighbor in town, I'll tell you, I'll lay it right out, it's Tier Road. There's a short bit on Ira's side that would, Ira would love us to continue down through there. That, uh, extra. Third of a mile or something like that.
Yep, it was proposed.
They could actually, Ira could come to us and say, well, you know, around town, let's do this, we're setting preference there.
It's been, it's come up at least twice.
Yeah, right, Bob, remember when, uh, they had a couple people from Ira and Hemuth come down? And that was, you can look it up in, uh, in, uh, the minutes, that was turned down.
And don't get me wrong, if somebody's got an emergency or something, whether it be a washout or, you know, whatever, willing to help out other towns, I had no problem with that, an emergency situation. Well, as far as this, as an ongoing thing, we're not a contractor. We're not, we're not here, we don't own buildings to rent out for income.
Well, let, let me, let me, let me suggest this, in this conversation that we're having right now. We have two ways of doing this, we could wait till they have a proposal, or we can make a motion tonight on this board, whether or not we would even wanna consider a proposal, and then have Katie get that information.
I'll make a motion, Katie draft up a thank you letter for appreciation of considering us, but we're not interested, of that sort.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? Alright, I'm gonna go around the board. How do you vote, Art?
Wait a minute, what are we voting on?
On the motion.
To send a thank you, we don't wanna do it.
Yes.
Okay.
How do you vote, Art?
I vote we do it, we send a letter.
How you vote, Bob?
Aye.
Aye means vote no. Correct?
Means vote to send it.
Right. Alright, seeing as, I, I would. I wanna stand up for s- the citizens of our town, uh, taxpayers of our town who had asked us to do this, so I would vote not to send it. George?
Well, again, uh, I think. The number of people that showed up at that meeting, I think they own some, um. Support in, in, in to the extent of receiving the proposal and seeing what it is. So I guess my vote would be, I think I'm voting, I should vote no, not to send it, yeah, that's what we're saying.
And what do you?
I made the motion to send it.
Okay. So, the motion passed, Katie?
Do you want it to be, um, like hard copy mailed or emailed?
No, hard copy.
I'll send you guys a draft before sending it out.
Okay. Sooner rather than later, so that they don't go through.
Their time is up and. Like I said, if this emergency situation pops up or something like that, you know.
Does anybody have anything else? If not.
So moved.
The second. All in favor of the motion? Anyone opposed?